Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this council meeting of the City of Vader. The date is September 10th, 2020, and the time is 6:01 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers?
Here.
Jason Daly?
He's not coming. He had to work.
Right, we did hear from Mr. Daly. He had an emergency that he had to fill in at his place of business, so he will not be attending.
Randy Hall?
Yeah.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Samantha Lovelady?
Here.
Mayor Shite?
Here. All right, pledge of allegiance. Mr. Parsons, will you do the honors?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, mayor's report. I wanted to let everyone know that we are pursuing some options for a Vader Small Business Relief Program utilizing CARES Act funds. You may have heard of a couple of our cities being able to use their CARES Act funds to help out distressed businesses. If you remember, we were given $25,000, and just recently, we were notified that it's been expanded with another $5,000 for a total of $30,000. Those funds have to be used for COVID-related expenses. The strings are very tight on that money, so we can't just use it for anything we want. However, helping out other businesses could be a use. The City of Centralia has just finished their program going, and you've probably heard about Tenino being able to do it as well. So I'm hoping to get some traction on that and have perhaps, hopefully, a resolution at the next council meeting for you to approve. Sure, there's been a lot of action around the Shoreline Master Plan update. If you remember, we did get a grant to pay for that update. Municipalities are required every several years, I think it's seven or eight years, something like that, to update that plan. We are a little late on that. We also need that updated for the wastewater treatment facility, since it is so close to the Oloqua. So, once again, that's all grant-funded. We're going to have to have public hearings and things like that in the future, so you can expect that. McMurphy's security system, we do have some of the parts already. There's a few more pieces coming. We'll be getting that up soon. I'm also exploring some options to get internet down there at the park. If that happens, we'd be able to wire the cameras in and be able to access them in real time from City Hall. But hopefully, I'll have more information about that for you as well. Alpine Court Lift Station. Some of you may be aware that our sewer facility does have a lift station down on Alpine Court. It is lower than our sewer lines that are on 10th. And so, back in the day, they installed some pumps to get that effluent up the hill. Those pumps are failing. There's electrical issues, and so we're looking at possible grants or other funding options to connect Alpine Court to the south, down to Park Road, where we could just use a gravity feed system and remove the lift station completely and save that expense in the future. Wastewater treatment plant upgrade. We're still on track for a mid-late November bid process. You should have had the Silver West update letter in your packet, so you can stay up to speed on that. They are going to be giving us an update pretty soon, in a council meeting, so you should have that to expect. As requested at the last council meeting, the wastewater collection system map. We did acquire a digital copy of that from Gibson Olsen, who made that map years ago. And it's online now on the city website on the municipal reference library. Reminders at the planning committee, next meeting is on the 17th, and the park board meeting, next meeting is on the 16th. One other thing for the mayor's report. On August 19th, Elena Knight resigned from the park board. It is one of the two vacancies now that we have on the park board. She resigned. She was just overwhelmed with other endeavors, and so she just needed more time to herself. So just always a reminder that we always have positions available on our boards usually. There's two on the park board right now and one on the planning committee. Council reports.
I just wanted to, real quick, give everybody a heads up. The Public Information Emergency Management Division of Washington said that there's a massive cloud of smoke outside of California and Oregon, and the wind is changing direction, and it's coming your way tomorrow. You have today to prepare. Let your family and friends know. Get supplies and create a box fan with filters that air around you. The video shows you how to do it. Get any essentials, so the smoke is going to really be bad tomorrow, is what the Emergency Management Division is saying.
Okay, that's good to know. Any other council reports? All right, agenda approval. I do have some modifications to the agenda. Item two, council to consider authorizing an additional $100 to the $1,000 previously proved. That should read differently. The city council approved $400 for a laptop, and I'm seeking an $1,100 total. So please adjust that appropriately. It should read something similar to, "Council to consider authorizing $1,100 for laptop." Also, I'd like to add item number three. Council to consider recommendation for temporary public works employee. Does anyone else have any additions?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with the added stuff that the mayor just said.
Mr. Parsons has made a motion to approve the agenda with the modified agenda. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for 8/27/2020.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the city council meeting minutes from August 27th. Do we have a second? Seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers for the beginning of September 2020 for $27,065.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers for the amount as written. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, special reports. We have a special report from Lewis County Sheriff's Department. Sergeant Engelbertson is here. He is stepping up to the microphone. Oh yeah, that works.
Can you hear me online okay?
We can hear you.
Okay. Kevin Engelbertson with the Lewis County Sheriff's Office. I have a report for August 2020. We had 522 citizen contacts. We had a total of 24 calls for service. Seven of those calls were while we were on scheduled shifts. The other 16 were, we responded to while not on scheduled shifts. We had 16 traffic stops resulting in only, it looks like, one traffic infraction. And we had one felony arrest during that time. Does anybody have any questions on the stats for August? The only other thing I'd like to, I told the mayor before the meeting started that I know there's been some work done on notifying the subject at the end of Park Place of some vehicles and such that were on city property, which he was served some letters on recently. I just went by there tonight and notified the mayor that it looks like all of the vehicles and debris is being cleaned up, so that's good. I'm also really glad to hear that you guys are talking about getting some cameras down at the park. I think that will really deter people from vandalizing the park and at least give law enforcement some teeth and some evidence to cite and possibly arrest anybody who wants to come down there and damage McMurphy Park. So that will be a good thing in the long run, I think. Any questions for me?
How many nights did the felony stay in jail? And the reason I ask that is because coming up is our budget time, and we always talk about getting our own police force or whatever. And a lot of people don't realize that when somebody goes to jail, we get to pay for them.
It's actually covered in our contract.
Or we would if we didn't have the current contract.
Yes, it's covered in our contract, the way it is right now.
I can find that out. I don't know how long he spent in jail. I think I've mentioned this before in the past, though. I know right now, especially the last about month and a half, myself and one of my other detectives, he has been working full-time on the trial coming up for the Jasper, the four-year-old. You know, one of them was able to pull their, withdraw their guilty plea, and that's all he has been working on, is that case. So it's cases like that that can really hinder your budget if you guys were to deal with that. But obviously, if we had something like that in the future, I think the sheriff's office would step in anyway and assist you guys. So I'll find out about how long he's spent in jail. I don't have that. I can find out on my computer.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions online? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Sergeant. All right, moving on to city business. Council to discuss on sewer ordinances. I'd like this to be the, hopefully, this will be the last discussion we have on this. I have not sent our recommendations to the attorney yet to be included in the code. So hopefully, you all got to see that document that I sent you that summarized the recommendations. And if there's any other things you'd like to talk about or add on, now's the time.
Well, I have a question about number three, about the, perhaps, removing that one. I have an issue with the garbage and the human waste. I don't think that should be removed at all, because we're having a lot of trouble with people hoarding garbage and not having it picked up or paying for it. And another issue I'm bringing up about that is because in all the years I've lived up here, I have never, ever seen a rat. My cats killed two of them this month up here. So the rats are spreading now all over town. And some of it could be because of maybe, I don't know, a lot of people have chickens and things like that. Maybe we should have something where people need to keep them in airtight containers, their food. But the human waste, I think, should be part of cabinet ordinance against that, the properties and garbage.
Okay.
The animal, pardon?
Okay, yeah, so those items that are listed there in my notes, item number three, you don't have a problem with those?
Pardon?
You don't, so just clarification, you do not have a problem with those being in the code as written?
Well, the garbage and human waste, and I'm not sure about the animal, because we were discussing fertilizer.
Okay.
So maybe it should be specific, you can have fertilizer for your gardens and things, but not just...
Okay, I'll make sure to get clarification on that.
Yeah, I agree with what you do, because you've got people around here that we've got sheep and chickens and pigs and dogs and cats and you name it. So animal excrement is gonna be on the ground. I'm not...
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanted to let you know, Donna, that I did look up the appeals process that you were trying to mention at the last council meeting. Yeah, I found that article and looked it up. It was the administrative appeal process must now be offered for required septic to sewer conversions. So in 2015, cities, towns, and counties are now required to offer an administrative appeals process with septic repair or replacement of existing single-family system, excuse me, when septic repair or replacement of existing single-family systems is denied by the local health department and sewer hookup is required. So in essence, if someone required a septic, the health department denied it. It actually gets kicked back to the local municipality to provide the appeals process for that. It's a Washington state law. I don't think we need to add it to our ordinance, because it's already a Washington state law. But I'll make sure to get clarification on that with the attorney when I send that to her.
Right, well, I didn't mean for you to particularly add it. I just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention that there is a state law that kind of covers that, so...
Yeah, it is a, I guess, a right, you would say, of a family to be able to ask for an appeal.
Right, yeah, that was the impression I got also.
Okay. Any other discussion on these sewer ordinances?
Not for me. I think that was all I had, was the...
Okay. No one has anything else? At this next week, I'll get these sent off to the attorney, so that we can have them put into a new draft for council approval at the next council meeting. Okay, hearing no other discussion. Moving on to item two of city business. If I can get my laptop to display it correctly. There we go.
Of all things to have happen on number two.
That's right, yes. Item number two, council to consider authorizing $1,100 for a laptop. So as it's been...
$1,100?
$1,100 for a laptop. So at the previous council, one of the previous council meetings, we authorized $400. And it's been a challenge lately to find a laptop for that price that's of acceptable quality. With further research, we found that technology to assist cities in dealing with the COVID crisis and providing the technology to do that is covered through the CARES Act. So this laptop could be covered through the CARES Act to provide this service that we're using it for, which is to provide, to run the city council meetings. So it's fully reimbursable, and so that will be more than enough to get a quality machine for the city.
If it's fully reimbursable, does the park board and the planning board need one also?
So we were discussing that option. Could we perhaps get laptops for an entire council or committee that they could check out from City Hall? And I think the answer is yes. The CARES Act provides funding to help your employees telework. So if the city employees need to stay home, we could use those reimbursable funds to buy them machines to do that, even provide internet access at their homes. However, given that we're going to try to utilize the funds for the small business grants, I'd rather not spend several thousand dollars on laptops for everybody, since everyone seems like they're getting along just fine without them, and try to use that money to give back to the businesses.
Well, may I say something about that?
Yes.
If there are people, anyone, who has a problem using their phone or something like that, you know, those little tablets you can get for a couple hundred dollars that are just as good as a laptop for $1,100 for something like this for meetings only?
Yeah, if anyone's having issues with the technology side of things, we can definitely use CARES Act money to get something. At this point in time, it seems like everyone is getting along without it. We could add that to the agenda at the next meeting if you'd like.
Or I don't think we need to buy anything more, but just a single laptop. At least for now, maybe talk to park board and planning committee, see if they really think they need one, but one should suffice, right?
If one should suffice, then they can all use the same computer, the same laptop that we're buying.
Sure, yeah, it could absolutely be checked out for different reasons.
That's all I get.
You're sure you can get a decent laptop for $1,100 right now? Have you priced one out and kind of gone for it in your mind?
Yeah, they're actually, they're actually about $800 for a really good machine that I found. And so this will cover that and plus the tax, and there'll still be money left over.
Right, and are we looking at like a protection plan and everything for that as well? Just because I'm thinking about that and with this, to make sure that laptop can run?
Sure, I could see if that fits in that budget. I could add that on there.
I just think it would be something that wouldn't hurt if it's $100 or $200 extra to keep an $1,100 machine running.
Sure.
Do we need that in a motion?
Absolutely, it needs to be in a motion.
Oh, I'll make a motion that we authorize $1,100, hopefully reimbursable through the CARES Act for the purchase of a new laptop.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve $1,100 for a city laptop. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second from Mr. Hall. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Right.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, last item of business. Council to consider recommendation for public works employee. I am trying to find... Okay, so hopefully, some of you have gotten a chance to see the letter that was sent. So just today, I conducted this interview, which is why it was added so late. "So after many weeks of waiting, we received one application for our temporary public works employee position. After completing a face-to-face interview, I can say that Jesse Weimer is qualified for the position. In addition to his experience in groundskeeping and maintenance, Mr. Weimer comes with the added experience of having completed an apprenticeship for water and wastewater operation in the city of Winlock. Mr. Weimer is professional, well-spoken, and friendly. I am pleased to submit him to you for your consideration and confirmatory vote." So if you remember, the city council approved 11 weeks for a temporary employee. And so this is the gentleman that has applied, and he's gonna be a great fit.
Perfect. So you need that in a motion too?
Let's do a motion.
Okay, make a motion that we approve the hiring of Jesse Weimer for the position listed.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the hiring of Jesse Weimer for the public works employee temporary position. Do we have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Any other discussion?
Will he be offered in the future a position for the sewer?
Yeah, if that position were to come available, I think it's great that we have this contact. Like I said, he's completed his apprenticeship, and this is the type of position that these folks are looking for when they finish. So it would certainly be something we could look into if that ever arose.
Well, he lives a whole lot closer than the other gentleman, and we probably wouldn't have to pay him mileage and time coming and going.
Certainly a possibility. But this, of course, this is just for the public works, the temporary position. With his experience, it's gonna be great that, for instance, we have some vacations coming up. You know, if Bill is out, Jesse has the experience to do that lab testing for us with his certification, so...
Very good.
And I believe, Donna, also, just an FYI, that we don't pay him to come and go.
I didn't quite understand what you said.
For Bill, I believe that we do not pay him to travel here and travel home. He's doing that on his own.
Okay, well, I know we pay his mileage.
No, I don't believe we do.
We do not pay his mileage. He's an hourly employee.
We do when he's on work-related trips.
Right. So Diane was just pointing out that... Yeah, Diane was just pointing out that if he goes on work-related trips, for instance, if he goes to pick up some supplies, he does get mileage for that. But he doesn't get mileage on a daily basis, driving to his home in the city.
Okay, I was thinking he was getting mileage, because it's on there some. Okay, I'm good.
All right, we have a first and a second on the table to approve Mr. Weimer's employment. Do we have any other discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we'll get him going as swiftly as possible. All right, moving on. Public comment. Does anyone, there's no one, there's no members of the public online, and there's no one in the city chambers is interested in talking, I don't think, so...
Okay, you're doing great.
All right, moving on to elected official comment. Elected officials, this is your time.
I just wanted to give a quick note out of Vader families. Lunches are being made available again for kids zero to 18 at the Vader preschool and over on Enchanted Valley.
Oh, these are the school, the school lunch programs?
Yeah, so they're doing free lunches for kids zero to 18, and they're available every day at 11:15 AM for anyone who needs one.
How long will we have to deal with that pump failure sewage thing? How long is that? What's the timeframe?
The Alpine Court? So we're just now, with Alpine Court grant, I'm just now talking with Ecology on trying to find funds and a program for that. So we're just in the initial stages of trying to get that going. So, but John was talking about getting new pumps down there, and you know, before we dump a bunch... And, you know, before we dump a bunch, dump a bunch of money into the thing, let's see if we can get rid of it first.
We can just buy a pipe, that would be a lot better.
Mm-hmm. So, but it's probably gonna be some time still before we can get this going.
We'll continue the work for that.
Yeah, yeah, it will, we can continue to, yeah, we can.
That's why I was asking about the time.
Yeah, yeah, we can continue, he, he goes down there on probably almost a daily basis to check on it, to make sure it's still running. That way it's not backing up and, and things like that, so.
I could see that being a disaster.
It could be, one of more reasons to try to get rid of it.
Yeah.
Alpine Court has always been a problem since day one. When they first put that down there, guy was the mayor and they talked about running that pipe, uh, gravity feed down through Park Road. But there's a, there's a hill there or something and they would have to bury the pipe so deep that it wouldn't do any good. So I don't know if that, they would have to put so much fill in there or something. It was a, a real problem, so that's why they never went that way. And I don't know if that problem could be remedied with people a little more savvy.
Right, it'll, yeah, I don't need to be engineered properly and I imagine it's a, it's not an unsurmountable issue. Looking at the contour map online, looks like Park Road is about fifteen feet lower than where the lift station is on Alpine, so, so there is a, so there is a slope there.
There's a part, there's a part that comes there, um, down from Alpine Court behind all of the houses where it would have to come through. There's like a swale in there and it was pretty deep. And they wouldn't have been able to cover the sewer pipe going through there. That was the deal, so.
Well, we'll see, if we get a grant to help pay for the engineering of it, we'll, we'll see what happens. Elected official comments, any other comments? Okay, hearing none. We've ended the agenda, so this meeting is over at six thirty-three PM. We are adjourned. Good evening, everybody.